Is for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic of gorgeous Kansas, one nation, under God, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you please do roll call? Mayor Clark?
Here.
Councilmember Crone?
Here.
Councilmember Grove?
Here.
Councilmember Pierce?
Here.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Here.
And Councilmember Buttonburg is absent. Agenda item D is open forum. Open forum is the time for anyone here tonight to address the council on any subject over which the council has the authority to act or in any item on the agenda other than a public hearing. Does anyone here tonight, either in the council chambers or on Zoom, wish to address the council at this time? If so, please approach the podium. Or if participating via Zoom, please click on the raise hand icon located in the reactions controls. There are no hands raised in Zoom. Okay, open forum is closed. Agenda item E is agenda approval. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve.
Okay. Any discussion? Please vote. Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Agenda item G1 is a public hearing on plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for Painted Woods West Park project. Now to close, public hearing open. Becky, have you received any correspondence? No, none received in the city clerk's office. Thank you. Director Jermeier?
Good evening, mayor and council. The public hearing before you tonight is for the construction of eight and a half acre neighborhood park located located west of Ute Avenue and along Indian Ridge Drive up on your screen. Up on your screen, the bright green box is just east of there. There's another little piece there that we currently own all of it. So we have acquired all the land. The park would consist of construction of a pre-manufactured restroom building, small parking lot, a two to five year old play zone, a five to 12 year old play zone, open air shelters, native planting areas, open lawn, flex court for basketball and pickleball, and necessary stormwater management components and landscaping. As part of the master plan, we did hold two public input meetings where we had great attendance from the surrounding neighbors and ultimately helped us with the design of the overall park. As with all of our new parks, we're trying to do something unique in each one. I will remind you that the uniqueness of this park is the treehouse design. The engineer's estimate for this project was $2,093,052. Construction of this park would begin as soon as weather allows in the spring and be substantially completed by late fall of 2025. Up on the screen there shows the layout of the overall park with surrounding trails, the southern border and the eastern border of that park. You'll see a little bit different shade of green. That's your native grasses and native plantings to go along with the sustainability plan. The play structure would be primarily in the middle of that area with the shelter area number six there, two different shelters on either side of the playground. And then the pickleball and basketball court being on that west end of the play area. Staff would be happy to answer any questions, but staff would recommend holding the public hearing.
Thank you.
Sorry, here's a couple more pictures before I.
Does anyone here tonight, either in the council chambers or on Zoom, wish to address the council and voice their comments or questions for this public hearing item? If so, please approach the podium or if participating via Zoom, please click on the raise hand icon located in the reactions controls. There are no hands raised in Zoom. Does council have any questions at this time? Uh-uh. Okay, and now declare this public hearing closed. Agenda item G2 is a public hearing on plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for Spring Crest Park project. And now declare this public hearing open. Becky, have you received any correspondence on this? No, none received in the city clerk's office. Thank you. Director Jermeier?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This public hearing is for the construction of Phase One of Spring Crest Park. It's located west of 13th Street and just south of Spruce Street. Phase One consists of construction of approximately five acres, which would include grading, stormwater management on the site, trails, benches, stone block outcropping, solar polar or solar pole lights, landscaping, a two to five year old play zone, a five to 12 year old play zone, and shade structures. As part of the master plan, we also held two public input meetings at the, for this park and received feedback from the residents to overall design this park. The engineer's estimate for this project is $934,071. Construction of this park would begin in the spring and substantially be completed by late fall of 2025. Up on this map here, you could see Spring Crest right there in the middle. The brownish colored area is the Phase One that we currently own. This shows trail access currently, the trail access to the north is already there between the two residents. So we would connect to that and then add in the play equipment. Just another rendering of the area. This one, the unique feature will be that hillside play. There's plenty of play opportunity along that, that hillside there. This map here shows the roughly five acres on the far right hand side of your screen is what we currently own, but shows the anticipated parkland that we will get for future phases and access points. And this just references the overall master plan and how this Phase One would fit into the overall master plan of future phases of this park project. Staff would be happy to take any questions you might have, and staff would recommend holding the public hearing.
Thank you. Does anyone here tonight, either in the council chambers or on Zoom, wish to address the council and voice their comments or questions on this particular public hearing item? If so, please approach the podium or click on the raise hand icon located in the reactions controls. There are no hands raised in Zoom. Thank you. Does council have any questions?
I was just curious if you got any pushback on that hill, that play hill.
No, in fact, you know, we take what we hear back from the residents and then Gina did an excellent job of coming up with something unique. And that was, that was a big hit.
I like it, yeah.
It's a big hit. It's unique to the area. That's for sure.
Thank you. All right. And now declare this public hearing closed. Agenda item G3 is a public hearing on the authorization of a loan and disbursement agreement and the issuance of notes to evidence the obligation of the city there under not to exceed $929,000 in sewer revenue capital loan notes. Now to close, public hearing open. Becky, have you received any correspondence? No correspondence received in the clerk's office. Director Kester?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members. Up on the screen is an exhibit and sorry for the tables on the left, they're really hard to see, but I'll walk through those. If you recall, the Northeast Apple Sewer Project, we've completed that project and we financed that project through the state revolving fund, SRF fund as it's known, with a low interest loan. With that ability, with that loan, you have the ability to convert about 1% of the interest to principal and using it on a sponsored project or also known as a sponsored project. If you also recall, we have entered into a 28 agreement with the city of Clive to partner on restoration on a section of Little Walnut Creek where the sewer went through the Little Walnut Creek corridor. And up on the screen, the exhibit on the right represents that Little Walnut Creek corridor between North Warrior Lane and just east of Alice's Road to the Clive corporate boundary. What I've circled there in that blue oval represents the Phase One of the stream restoration project or the sponsored project as we're calling it here that we partnered with Clive. It's under construction and Clive has submitted their first request for reimbursement. So what this action tonight requires of city council is to approve a loan amendment of that 13.2 million SRF loan. And so we are converting again interest to principal and therefore changing a portion of that debt or adding in additional debt to the tune of $929,000. So the public hearing is required to take this resolution, which you'll see later on the agenda. Happy to take any questions if you have any. But some of those practices that are being implemented for the stream restoration project, the sponsor project are following the guidelines in the Iowa River Restoration Toolbox, such practices as rocks, rock constructed riffles, stepped, step pool structures, stone toe protection, wood toe protection, and other erosion control features and live staking to implement and restore that waterway. Staff recommends holding the public hearing. Have any questions if you have any?
Thank you. Does anyone here tonight, either in the council chambers or on Zoom, wish to address the council and voice their comments or questions on this particular hearing item? If so, please approach the podium. Or if participating via Zoom, please click on the raise hand icon. There are no hands raised in Zoom. Does council have any questions at this time? All right. And now declare this public hearing closed. Agenda item H1 for Painted Woods West Park project, H1A, consideration of approval of a resolution approving plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Matt?
Plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost are on file with the city clerk for review. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Staff would recommend approval of the resolution.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
This is probably going to be one of my favorite parks. This is beautiful. Good job.
All right, please vote. Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Item H1B, consideration of approval of a resolution awarding contract. Can I get a motion? Move to approve. Okay.
Project bid letting was held here at City Hall on December 17th, 2024. At 2:00 PM, we received six bids with the low base bid being from Concrete Connections LLC in the amount of $1,674,999, which is 20% below the engineer's estimate. There were three alternates up there on your screen that we identified as part of the bid process. We typically do these with parks projects as a deduct, just in case bids come in over our budget. Staff is not recommending accepting any of the alternates. As far as our working relationships with Concrete Connections, they were the contractor that built Trailside Dog Park and most recently at Sugar Creek Park. And we had a great working relationship with them on that. Staff would recommend awarding the Painted Woods West Project Concrete Connections LLC in the amount of $1,674,999. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Well, I'm grateful to see it come in under budget, and I'm also grateful for local option sales tax dollars. So with that, please vote. Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Agenda item H1C, consideration of approval of a resolution approving contract and bond. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
The contract, the bond, and the certificate of insurance have been received. Staff would recommend approval of the resolution.
Thank you. Any discussion? Please vote. Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Agenda item H2 for Spring Crest Park project. H2A, consideration of approval of a resolution approving plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost. Can I get a motion? Move to. Move to approve. Second. Matt?
Plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost are on file with the city clerk for review. Staff would recommend approval of the resolution.
Thank you. Any discussion? Please vote. Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Item H2B, consideration of approval of a resolution awarding contract. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
This project was also bid here at City Hall on the same day, December 17th, 2024, at 2:00 PM. We received five bids on this with the low base bid from Elder Corporation in the amount of $666,470.52, which is 28.6% below the engineer's estimate. Again, there were two alternates that were identified as part of the bid process. Staff is not recommending accepting any of those alternates. We have a prior working relationship with Elder Corporation, most recently at our Stratford Crossing Park that we just finished up. Staff would recommend awarding the Spring Crest Park Project Concrete Connections LLC in the amount of $666,470.52. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. I believe, Matt, no offense, you recommended award to Concrete Connection when you met Elder.
Elder, Elder Corporation, thank you.
Catch. All right. Any discussion or questions? Please vote. Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Item H2C, consideration of approval of a resolution approving contract and bond. Can I get a motion? Move to approve. Okay. Matt?
The contract, bond, and certificate of insurance are on file or we have received them. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any discussion? Please vote. Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair? I'm sorry.
Oh.
I'm sorry. Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Agenda item H3, consideration of approval of a resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action on not to exceed $929,000 in sewer revenue capital loan notes. Can I get a motion?
To approve. Second.
Rudy?
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll just add that the schedule for this after tonight's action, if approved, allows us to complete the amendment with IFA and we'll look for that first loan dispersment here in the first part of February. And then the project itself is under construction with the completion about July of 2025. So that's when we would look to have that final dispersment for the loan amount. So just wanted to add that a little bit there. Other than that, staff recommends approval of the resolution. Happy to take questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Please vote. Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Agenda item I1 is the consent agenda. Can I get a motion? Move to approve. Second. Any discussion? Please vote. Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Agenda item I2 is 2025 appointments. I2A, consideration of approval of a resolution approving mayor's appointment of executive committee sub-area nominees to the Duane Area Metropolitan Planning Organization. The sub-area has nominated myself and Mayor Jones of Windsor Heights to fill that role this year. And I get a motion. Move to approve. Second. Any discussion? Please vote. Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Item I2B, consideration of approval of a resolution approving mayor's appointment of representation to the Heart of Iowa Regional Transit Authority Transportation Advisory Group. They have requested that we appoint someone this year. Primary, I'm appointing Jennifer Brown and second alternate member Nick Osborne. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
All right. I2C, for the long one. Consideration of approval of a resolution approving a mayor's appointment or reappointment of citizen members to the various boards and commissions. To the Board of Adjustment for a five-year term, Cole Biscard. This is a reappointment. To the Board of Appeals for a five-year term, Michael Prospero. This is also a reappointment. To the Park Board for three-year terms, Keisha Fields, Melissa Stotts, and Chris Backstrom. To Planning and Zoning Commission for five-year terms, Jason Tool and Megan Binkle. That is, that one is a reappointment. And then Public Art Advisory Commission, three-year terms, Weston Mulgrin, Catherine Murray, and Abby Christiansen. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Please vote. Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Item I3 for Kettlestone Central Retail Phase One, I3A, consideration of approval of a resolution approving preliminary plat. Can I get a motion? Move to approve. Okay. Melissa?
Good evening, mayor and council. The owner and applicant is Caliber Land Company LLC. The property is located south of Southeast West Town Parkway and east of Grand Prairie Parkway. It contains 25.94 acres total. The property is zoned K-RC Kettlestone Retail Community District and K-MU Kettlestone Mixed Use District. The project includes the first phase of development for Kettlestone Central Retail. As you can see, areas on the screen are grayed out. That's for future development. And the two buildings shown in red on the west side of the area outlined in blue is what the site plan is approving for those two buildings. That's for this first phase. So Phase One, again, the two retail buildings. Each building is proposed to be just over 15,000 square feet in area and 28 feet in height. The private drive that runs east-west between the two buildings will provide a main street feel for the overall development. This drive will include parking. There are also several parking areas located around the entire development. Each of the buildings also includes outdoor patio spaces at the east ends. A trash enclosure will be provided along the north side of the site and then one will also be provided along the south side of the site with this first phase. A monument sign will be provided at the entrance off of Grand Prairie Parkway. The final plat includes six lots and two outlots. Lots one and five. Oh, sorry, one through five, and both outlots are zoned K-RC. And then lot six, let me go to the final plat. I think it's in here somewhere. Okay, so lot six is the area shown at the southeast direction, kind of this backward L shape. That's the one that's zoned KMU. That's Kettlestone Mixed Use District. The other lots and outlots are all K-RC. The two proposed buildings are proposed on lots one and three. Each building is on its own lot. The final plat includes ingress egress easements in order to provide access throughout the development. Two accesses will be provided into the site at this time with several future accesses planned at future phases of development. Parking and landscaping requirements are being met. Some of the parking provided with this phase of development will also serve for future phases. Public utilities are provided to the site, but the utilities within the site will be privately owned and maintained. Stormwater detention will be provided in a pond located at the south side of the site. It's within lot six, within this area right here. That's where stormwater will be collected for the overall development. That pond will also be privately owned and maintained. There are no parkland dedication requirements associated with this phase of the development as there is no residential proposed at this time. Parkland dedication will be required with any future residential phases of the mixed use, Kettlestone mixed use allows for residential. So if there is residential within that KMU zoning district, parkland dedication will be required at that time. Elevations of the building or both of the buildings are very similar. They look like this. Proposed to be constructed mostly of brick and fiber cement siding and panels in different color variations as well as storefront glazing. And that's just the trash enclosure. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat, final plat, and site plan, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Okay. Please vote. Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Agenda item I3B, consideration of approval of a resolution approving final plat for Kettlestone Central South Lot Two. Can I get a motion? Move to approve.
Second.
Melissa?
I have nothing further to add, just that, just a reminder, lots one, or sorry, there's six lots and two outlots in the overall final plat.
Any question? Please vote. Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Item I3C, consideration of approval of a resolution approving site plan. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Melissa?
I have nothing further to add.
Any questions? All right. Please vote. Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Item I4, Painted Woods West Town Homes Plat Three. I4A, consideration of approval of a resolution approving preliminary plat. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Melissa?
Okay. The owner and applicant is JJR Holdings LLC. The property is located north of Interstate 80 and west of Sixth Street. It's outlined in red on the screen. It contains just over four acres in area. The properties zoned R4, Road Dwelling and Town Home Dwelling District. The project includes 42 units. Each unit is on its own lot. All units are three bedrooms and just over 1,000 square feet in area. All buildings will be two-story and each unit will include a two-car attached garage. Let me just zoom in a little bit so you can see the overall site. All streets internal to the development will be private streets. Access will be provided into the site off of Indian Ridge Drive as well as from the existing townhome development to the east. All units will be serviced with private utilities that will be extended throughout the development. Stormwater detention will be provided in an existing pond located to the northeast. You can see it on the screen, just to the east of that. Landscape buffers will be provided along the west and north sides of the development. All utilities are private, including that maintenance of the pond is all, it's owned privately and maintained privately. Parkland dedication is being met with overall Painted Woods West development. And then the building elevations are very similar to the other two plats adjacent to this one. So they'll be similar to what you see out there right now. This materials include lap siding, board and batten, shake siding, and stone. I believe that is all I have. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat, final plat, and site plan, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Please vote. Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Item I4B, consideration of approval of a resolution approving final plat. Can I get a motion? Move to approve. Okay. Melissa?
I have nothing further to add.
Any question? Please vote. Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Item I4C, consideration of approval of a resolution approving site plan. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve.
Second. Melissa?
I have nothing further to add.
Any questions? Please vote. Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Item I5, Street Resurfacing Project, Ashworth Drive from Second Street to Fourth Street, Waco Place from Ashworth Road to Wilson Street. Item I5A, consideration of approval of a motion approving change order number three to the Grimes Asphalt and Paving Corporation, decreasing the contract in the amount of $63,382.55. Can I get a motion? Move to approve. Second. Rudy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Madam Mayor, up on the screen, you'll see a summary of the original contract or award, five hundred and nine thousand and some change. You had change orders one and two, first was, uh, for Waterborne, um, pavement marking changed to durable. And then change order number two was changing hydro seed to sod and then, uh, completion date changed to accommodate. Or coincide with the summer semester with walking schools. Change order three that you have before you is a reduction in the contract amount of sixty-three thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty-five cents, and this is just basically adjusting as-built quantities. Uh, as measured in the field, so happy to take any questions, but staff recommends approval of change order number three.
Thank you, any questions? Please vote. Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Item I five B, consideration of approval of a resolution accepting public improvements. Move to approve?
Second.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, up there, you can see the final acceptance amount with that assumed change order three approval. Um, four hundred and fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars and seventy-two cents, so the project has been reviewed by the engineering firm, McClure Engineering. As well as city staff and find it in general conformance with plans and specs, so we recommend approval of resolution at this time, happy to take any questions if you have any.
Thank you, any comments or questions? Please vote. Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Alright, agenda item J, reports.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, just a couple of things for you tonight. Included within the consent agenda tonight was, uh, the resolution to change. The date for trick-or-treating from October thirtieth to October thirty-first, um, and that was after a lot of discussion at a metro-wide level. You know, several, uh, other communities have also, uh, completed that. And, uh, so we, uh, proposed that in order to be consistent with our surrounding, uh, cities and neighbors. Uh, we obviously were in the dead of winter, so we probably won't do a whole lot more with that at this time, it already has been, uh, communicated to a certain extent by the Duane Register. Um, but we will obviously follow up with that, uh, uh, as we get closer to that date. Uh, also would, uh, uh, remind you that as a part of that resolution, we did include a provision that would allow for. The mayor, after consultation of city staff, to, uh, declare a proclamation if there was some need to change that date. Uh, just to kind of get away from the process we had to do this year where we had to call a special council meeting, so. Uh, hopefully we won't have to worry about that, but we've provided for that in the future. Uh, the other item just of mention is obviously we started today of week two of, of the legis- legislature for this year. Uh, I did send out this afternoon kind of an overview of the bills that at least I think we care about right now. Um, and some comments related to those as well as a position that I've communicated to, uh, Doug Strike with, uh, Kearney and Applebee. And, uh, just know that, uh, as things come along with that, I will be communicating as rapidly as I can and we may need your assistance depending on, on what's going on at the Capitol. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve?
Your report?
Chris?
I'm happy to say that the mobile home park is now under new management. And I want to say that part of that, and I'm going to a meeting right after this. Uh, I've been asked to thank the mayor and the council. For the ordinance that says that is, that that's going to stay a mobile home park. Because they kind of feel that kind of helped us get new management, so thank you on behalf of them.
Glad to hear that. Anna?
No report.
Rob?
Report.
Ben?
Our points.
Alright, then I will take a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Fantastic, hope you guys have a good, albeit very, very cold.